Hi colleagues, can I welcome you all to the meeting of Nodley's Sound Council. First item, apologies.
Not received, yeah.
Item two, presentation. Before we get to the presentation, can I introduce Rachel Akter?
Hi.
Justin Wilson, Principal Planner, and Lisa Harris. And can I ask members to... Can I ask members to... At the end of the presentation, of course, you're allowed to ask questions. Can I ask members to restrict to questions rather than making statements such as "mold blues"? Is everyone happy with that? Lisa?
Thank you very much. myself and Latina here tonight to talk to you about the Nodley local plan and to the most recent stage of consultation that's going on with regard to the local plan. The local plan's been in development now for quite a significant number of years, probably since 2006/07. We've been developing the plan. It is a long and drawn-out process. It's a legal process that we have to comply with. The plan that we have and that we're consulting on at the moment proposes a number of... The purpose of the plan is to identify land within Nodley for development in order to meet the housing needs and the employment needs of the current borough's residents and also the future residents from Nodley. So the plan proposes that we would build 8,100 dwellings and 164 hectares of employment land would also be developed, and that's during a period between up to 2028. In previous stages of the plan, we proposed to develop land in the urban areas. Unfortunately, planning policy has significantly changed over the last few years and there is now a requirement on local authorities to identify five-year housing land supply with a 20% buffer, so for all intents and purposes, a six-year housing land supply. The urban area of Nodley and part of the public examination that occurred in November and July, part of that examined our land availability. And one of the big issues that came out was that our proposal to only build on the urban areas didn't provide sufficient land during the period, during that six-year period. And therefore, we were asked by the public, by the examiner, to go back and relook at our land supply. That meant that we in the council, in order to make sure that Nodley is sustainable, in order that it would meet the needs of local residents and in order to grow the borough and to be the economic place that we want it to be, we had very little choice but to look to the Green Belt and the Green Belt release. However, as I said, I mentioned as part of that presentation that the council had... The plan gets inspected by an independent inspector who is appointed by the Secretary of State for Communities and Local Government. And that inspector makes sure that we're, one, we've done it all properly and, two, that we comply with all the regulations that we need to comply with. Once the inspector has his final report, then it's only at that point that the council can actually adopt the local plan. So there is still something significant time to go until the council can adopt the plan. And those two public hearings took place, as I said, in November 2030 and in July 2014. Fundamentally, the inspector during those hearings has found that the plan that we have is sound and that's not in the Scouse tale of sound. It means that it's legally compliant. We've done all the legal things that we needed to do in order to make sure that we've got something that can be delivered other than this issue of Green Belt and housing supply. And that's why we've had to revisit it and come up with further modifications. The Green Belt release that we're talking about is in 10 locations throughout the borough. And those locations are south of Weston, land to the south of the M62, which is often referred to as Contra Colli, land east of Halewood, land in Carlane and Prescott, land bounded by the A58 in Prescott, Edenhurst Drive in Heighton, Nodley Lane in Heighton, east of Nodley Industrial Park in Kirby and Bank Lane in Kirby. There is further land that's also being considered. However, the inspector was very clear in that the land surrounding the Nodley Village area should not be released from the Green Belt at this point in time, but should be safeguarded. And safeguarded means that it should be identified for possible development into the future. And that into the future will be post-2028, which is the period that the plan is in. So the consultation that we have ongoing at the moment started on the 19th of September and runs until the 14th of November. We've written letters to a number of residents who live within 200 metres of all of the sites. We've had a number of public dropping events. We've displayed site notices around the sites. We've had briefings to all of the parish and town councils in the borough. And we've also advertised it via the website, press releases, and so on and so forth. And therefore, we're here today to listen to your feedback on the plan but also to encourage you to put formal feedback into the examiner so that the examiner can actually, inspector can actually consider your feedback as a time of council. On that basis, I'm happy to take any questions.
Rob?
Councillor Robert Arnold, councillor for this area here, Nodley Village. I live in the village. I know many of the residents in the village. And when I go to the local shops or the garage or the local facilities, people ask me all the time what's happening. I haven't found one person that agrees with this Green Belt proposal, not one. Everybody's against it. I'm against it. I really am. The village is a lovely place and I think you're going to destroy it. I really do. But apart from the negative reason that's been given, and I do think it's a negative reason, given by the Borough Council to take this Green Belt and remove it, what other reason could there be? There's no reason to do what's going on. But what I'd also like to know is what will the people of Nodley Village gain from this? They seem to be losing all around. I have another question later if I can.
Yeah, Del, you've got one question in mind there.
Obviously, we never thought this was going to be a popular decision. I know no council in the land makes a decision lightly to remove land from the Green Belt. The reason why we're doing it is because the borough needs more houses for people to live in and more jobs for people. The borough suffers from significant deprivation and therefore, creation of jobs and creation of employment is a real priority for us. And the borough also, in order to be sustainable as a borough, needs to create more places for the existing residents to live as the population grows but also to attract new residents to the borough as well. And that is a target of the borough. We also want to create new housing markets. So one of the things that's quite difficult in Nodley is that we don't have higher bounded, council tax bounded properties. And that puts a significant strain on the borough. And therefore, one of the things that was considered was to create new housing markets in the borough by the release of this Green Belt. So it's not been a decision that's been taken lightly. As is being said, you know, we fought very long and hard in order to just develop on the brownfield sites. But unfortunately, in order to comply with our legal duty and also to achieve the desires of the council in order to grow as a borough and save our residents' wealth, we've had very little choice but to look at the Green Belt. I think, I take a point on board your views and therefore would encourage you to respond to the consultation. What I would say is that this isn't in just one location. It is throughout the borough that this has been considered. And what we have tried to do is to choose Green Belt locations that are adjacent to existing urban conurbations so that we're seeing to be growing an existing community, not creating a brand-new one.
Yeah, councillor Roosevelt, see, the question I'm going to ask is that, like you say, you've taken 10 plots away from Green Belt and you're saying some of it's going to be business plan. Have you looked at your research? This is a question by a representative. That if you look at the industrial estates, they're not full to their capacity, right? So why are you looking at making more development in different areas, right? When we haven't got the resources for the, like, the industrial estates in St John's? It's not for its capacity. Kirby, Nodley Village, and all the different places like that. Have you done your research on that? And have you looked at the brown land as well? And how much brown land have we got?
In terms of the local plan, I think the important thing to consider is that it's a 15-year planning strategy for the borough. And as part of identifying housing employment land over that 15-year timeframe, we've done a number of studies, two specifically which look at the capacity of land within the urban area for development. And with relation to employment land, we've done quite detailed assessments of greenfield sites and brownfield sites and principal sites within the existing industrial areas. And the important thing to note with that is that we've got a lot of supply within the urban area but over a 15-year timeframe, we haven't got enough to meet government targets. And the other issue is that we haven't got enough ranging choice of sites, particularly large-scale sites which are adjacent to high infrastructure, which are attractive to developers. And the plans, identifying land within the Green Belt is trying to meet those requirements for a wider group number of sectors that we currently don't have a lot of sites available for them. The other issue that I'd like to add is that with relation to the employment sites, the ones that we've identified, the land south of the M62, is particularly important in terms of attracting large-scale and distribution and logistic sectors to Nodley. And that site is far larger than anything else we've got in the borough at the moment. And the other site which falls within this local area is the land east of Nodley, Industrial Park. And that provides the potential to provide a gateway or an entrance point enhancement to the wider industrial parks, which fits with the wider regeneration strategy, which is also part of the plan for the industrial park area.
The view of all these town and parish councils in Delfy, which is Weston, Halewood, Prescott, Crotton, totally opposed to the plan. Also, there's colleagues there from Sefton, but there's other facts Sefton. It was the Gold Town Council, Liddley Town Council, Enchi Parish Council, and a few others. They're all totally opposed to the plan because what they propose to develop is switch-armed. What I'm asking is will you receive representations from Major Sire Association of Local Councils or only those organisations that operate within the borough of Nodley?
We have a duty to consult broader than the local authority boundaries. And we have a duty to cooperate, it's called, with our other local authority areas, which we have done. We haven't consulted with all of the town councils that you mentioned there that are outside of the area. And whilst you say that they are opposed to Green Belt release, I'm not sure they're opposed to Green Belt release in Nodley. They may well be opposed to Green Belt release in their own areas as this is something that all of the areas are considering.
No, it's a general consensus that the delegates from all town councils, parish councils, in Major Sire. And the general consensus was that they were all totally opposed to it, right? Now, we commit representations of local town councils and no doubt they can do the same in Halewood. The question is, would now, which is in Major Sire Association of Local Councils, would you receive representation from them?
It's a public consultation and therefore we should, you know, we would be happy to receive a consultation and response from anyone.
I'm Eli, councillor Tony Eli, Nodley Village. Just one quick question related to what councillor Donnelly's just said. Isn't it true that prior to these local plans being put forward, that Nodley did some work with Sefton in identifying areas of the inbound land that could be used?
It was basically predicated by a joint Nodley and Sefton Green Belt review, which was also done on a more informal basis with West Lancashire Council as well. So it was the three authorities working to a more or less consistent methodology which led to the signs.
I'm Ben Thompson, representing the Longview Ward. Just to reiterate really what Rose has just said about the brownfields. You haven't really gone back and answered the question. How much brownfield is consumed within this plan? And what locations is the brownfield? And who knows? We don't know where the brownfield areas are because we're not the experts. So where are the brownfield areas? And how much of it are consumed within this plan? How much is being used up?
I think in terms of this specific...
Because you are supposed to prioritise before you touch the Green Belt, so that's why I'm asking you.
In terms of the specific numbers, which is how much brownfield land is part of the third of the land supply, I haven't those figures to hand. But they are available as part of two evidence-based studies, which are available as part of the examination library for the local plan. So I'll be happy to direct members to us after the meeting for the benefit from that. And in terms of prioritising urban land, the brownfield sites, that was part of the council's strategy originally when we submitted the plan to the central government in 2013. Unfortunately, when the council put forward that approach to the planning inspector, he basically considered that the council was being too optimistic in terms of the overall quantum of land that was available into the brownfield sites in the urban area and also the rate at which they could come forward. And part of that rationale was basically that some of the land in Nodley wasn't economically viable to develop, certainly in the short term, within specifically the first five years of the plan period. So the inspector went through quite a detailed systematic site-by-site analysis of some of the sites, there were brownfields in the urban area. And he basically applied a higher risk assessment to those. So that basically meant that, for example, maybe one in five or one in half of the sites that we previewed that had been struck out. That resulted in less supply in the urban area, which meant we needed to revise the plan and bring forward more sites earlier on in the plan period. And that's one of the basic reasons why we agreed about sites for early release at the moment, satisfying the planning inspector's concerns.
Our village is by definition a small hamlet with narrow road structures and tight junctions, two of which are currently stop junctions in order to protect the residents using them. How can removing Green Belt land for development be balanced by the safety of all the residents of the village?
That would not be released. At this moment in time, the proposal is not to release that from the Green Belt. The proposal is to safeguard it for future development post-2028. All of the sites that are to be released from the Green Belt have got undergone infrastructure assessments to ascertain whether the infrastructure could be put in place in order to support the development. And that includes both the existing infrastructure in the surrounding area and also the infrastructure that could be placed on the site. And that evidence base does exist and we can point you to that in order for you to look at the traffic assessments that could be done for the specific sites that that work has been done.
I appreciate that. However, that unimpressive status that you're creating does entail the removal of Green Belt, in fact.
If not for the Nodley Village sites, if change is the status of the land, so it would no longer be Green Belt land, it would be referred to as safeguarded land and safeguarded to obtain that due to planning legislation.
Can safeguarding be brought forward?
Yeah. In terms of converting a safeguarded site, which was in Nodley Village, into an allocation for formal development, the council would have to review its local plan. So assuming that the current local plan went through and was adopted next year, the council would have to go through another process involving extensive stages of public consultation, new evidence to ascertain whether that Nodley Village site was actually required for development. At the current time, all we're doing is safeguarding that wider area so it's not sterilised by any other form of development that would prejudice it coming forward in the future. So it would be protected, it wouldn't be built out for any reuse. And via the future local plan, if you were looking to lease that site at that point, then we're looking at the site's nature, which elements of the site particularly need it or were needed at all. It wouldn't be a fall-on conclusion that we would replace that successor plan to the one we're planning on.
Okay, sounds good. Councillor Joseph, Mr Fitch Ward, thanks Lisa. I think possibly that Justin's just answered my question in part from Del's question. But in section 3.4, safeguarded land after 2028, in paragraph 3.5, it refers to removing flexibility for the safeguarded land being leased from the Green Belt to be developed before 2028 if needed. So, I mean, that's quite a confusing statement, if you will. It's almost like a misnomer and it almost negates 3.4 in a sense. So what you're saying is really, I don't really ask anything, is that that land will be safeguarded till 2028? But in just response then, there could be a chance within the three or four years, given this plan goes through, that they could actually develop it before?
When the council made representations to the inspector in the hearing in July, we proposed that all of the Green Belt sites, we chose all of the sites exactly the same and said that they should come out, we won't treat any of them differently. The inspector revisited that issue with us and said that there wasn't sufficient evidence for the land in Nodley Village to be taken out and suggested to us that it should be safeguarded. At the meeting that I attended, a number of the hearings, but other than what I attended specifically, the inspector was very clear that we had not made the case to develop on this land and that therefore, it was a very strong case that if we were ever to make the case, it would need to be through a review of the local plan, not on a whim.
No.
And therefore, it would require a significant amount more consultation for that land specifically. And that's where it is confusing. Planning legislation is a very difficult part of the law. And it is very confusing even because I wasn't working on a day-to-day basis. But fundamentally, the land will be safeguarded. In other words, we are saying upfront, this could be developed for housing land in the future. But in order for us to then revisit that, we will have to review the local plan. This time, the local plan review has taken us six years, so it will not be a small feat to review the local plan.
I appreciate that, Lisa, and thank you for answering.
We've been under the impression that brownfields was going to get used and we haven't got enough brownfields, so therefore you're going to take the Green Belt land. So you've just said before that some of the brownfields was taken out by the government because it wasn't good enough. It must have been adequate for use to put it in in the first place. So have you subjected to it not being accepted?
During the local plan hearings, the council and the council office, the planning offices, provided a significant amount of data to prove that the brownfield sites could be developed. Unfortunately, the developers who, or the landowners who own the land in the Green Belt got a significant amount of evidence that why it couldn't be developed. So you had an inspector who considered both sides of that argument. One of the issues as part of that was based is that the council has had a significant amount of brownfield sites to date and the land hasn't been developed to date. And therefore, that was used in a way against us now. So we've said that the land could be developed. The difficulty and one of the things that the opposition said is that the land hasn't been developed. And a lot of that goes about viability. And when, just to mention viability before, there's a very marked difference between the cost of actually developing a site and what you can then sell those houses for. If the cost of developing the site and then the sale of the houses or properties is not, you know, not a significant enough gap, then nobody will ever develop it because it's not financially viable. And fundamentally, people won't with money out of it and they thought it won't get developed.
So what we're looking for is permanent.
And that's why we lost the argument. But we did fight, very strongly.
Can that bring me to, so if you said on here that you're going to try and release the land, the Green Belt land in Nodley Village, but you're going to safeguard it till 2028, why can't you leave that land till 2020 and then look to see if you need it and then release it from the Green Belt?
That kind of approach was what we were really submitting to government in 2013, in terms of that phased approach. Originally, it was very clear distinction between sites in the urban area which should be built out first to a certain level and then it'll almost reach a trigger point where you release your second phase of site which should be in the Green Belt. Unfortunately, the inspector didn't accept our arguments in terms of our justification for that kind of approach. And so we've had to remove that phasing policy and bring forward the Green Belt sites alongside some of the brownfield sites.
I'm councillor Shannon Arnold, Nodley Village again. These proposals are being forced forward by the central government. The first stage of the local plan is the removal of Green Belt status. What pre-planning objections carry the most weight in this situation?
At this stage of the consultation of the local plan, it is a very technical stage and therefore, it needs to be, we would advise people that they should in their consultations and if they want to put evidence forward, they should make sure that that evidence is relevant to planning legislation. And that's not an easy thing to do, we recognise that. On our website, we've got brief questions and some guidance notes in order to help local people and local businesses in order to guide them really through the process. The technical nature would need to be specific because that we may well have got wrong. And so things like the environmental impacts, that there may well be transport impacts, but there would have to be some elements of evidence around those as well. I'm afraid that we don't want it next to us is probably not something that would be lent a huge amount of weight at this stage in the actual consultation that they're giving. We don't consider the consultations that are brought in. All we as a council do is to collect those consultations and then forward them on to the actual inspector and it's him who would actually then consider those consultations. I'm just going to make sure it is a very technical element of it. So I'm just going to make sure we make it like I advise.
Yeah, I totally agree with Lisa saying. I think in terms of the council's role at this stage, it is really to collect responses and forward them on to the inspector. In terms of the inspector's considerations, they are based on planning arguments. So as Lisa said, you're talking about highways, ecological value, and things of a technical nature which have a material weight in his views. It couldn't be something that is subjective in terms of, you know, the more personal views or feelings from a particular site. That would unfortunately, although that is an important matter. In terms of the planning judgment, that doesn't carry anywhere unfortunately.
Councillor Russell, Mr Fitch Village. It's a good question actually. If this proposal went through and the Green Belt land was released, what guarantees have we got that it won't be land banned? Because if we look back 12, 14 years ago, we were in this position again. We've been negotiating land to go or houses to go, it's called NDC. And here we are 14 years later, still haven't fulfilled our commitment to those residents who lost their homes. All the brownfield sites still left over there, vacant land, grass all over the place. So what guarantees have we got that we won't end up with another NDC site?
To do with the land bank, there are no guarantees at all that if we take the land out of the Green Belt that it will be developed. What I would say, there's land values in the Green Belt are probably quite low. And land values, when they become residential, have potentially residential or commercial permission to build, the land values increase and therefore the likelihood of them being developed increases accordingly. But we don't, the council doesn't own this land and therefore we can't promote the actual development. But I would also say that as part of the hearings, one of the things that the inspector considers is will the land be developed? Because that goes very much towards the issue of the five-year housing supply. And on this occasion, a number of the sites, in fact probably all of the sites, had representations from the landowners to positively say that they would engage in development of the sites. So there is evidence as part of the hearing process and evidence submitted by the landowners and potential developments that the site would be developed. In relation to the NDC and the brownfield sites that have yet to be developed, they were considered as part of the hearings. The slow rate of development was also considered as part of the hearings and was part of the issue that went against us about viability. We have, over the last five years, six years, gone through the worst recession the country's seen and that did significantly slow the rates that was expected in that NDC area. And that was, as I said, part of the evidence base that the landowners in the Green Belt place actually used against us when we were saying that brownfield sites should be fixed.
Councillor Martin, Longview. I'd just like to ask, I mean, the government inspector, has he shown more favourable impact to the landowners than what he has to the people that live in Nodley and the Borough Council? Because everything seems to be in the favour of the landowner and not the existing people who live in the borough and the Borough Council.
The inspector has to judge the evidence that's presented to him impartially and against the legislation. He received significant, and I mean, I'm not here to defend the inspector, but he received significant amounts of evidence from a number of landowners and some of those landowners, their land is not being taken out of the Green Belt. So I would say from our perspective, we are not unhappy with the inspector and the process that's been going through. We may be unhappy with his findings, but we don't think it's been done wrongly anyway. What I would say is that the landowners did put significant evidence into the hearing and they have made significant investments into putting that evidence in. Therefore, the weight, if you do go onto the website or go into, you know, to read some of the reports, you will see that they have invested heavily in getting this land out of the Green Belt.
As the town council have a lease on part of this land, are you aware of that? Are you aware of that?
I'm personally not aware of that.
See, the town council have a 90-year lease on part of this land in Nosley Village. Now, you say you consulted all the owners. Well, we're technically an owner, we haven't been consulted. And are you aware that we own the land?
So, I can't answer, I can't do.
Is this public open space?
I can't answer the question about the actual ownership, but I could say that the town council has been consulted throughout all of the, um, series of this, and we have presented, um, to the town council in packs.
We have not, we have not been consulted?
Never, ever. Yeah, yeah, we, we, we can provide evidence that that's the case, because all of the town councils have been consulted and packed on, um, on the development of the local plan. What I would say is, is that this is at a stage whereby probably it's more specific, um, to sites, whereas earlier stages would have been about your views and opinions on actual some of the targets within there. So it may felt like a very different consultation, but the town council has been consulted and.
Are the Borough Council aware that there is public open space there? When you're talking about making this green belt, air signals of the green belt?
We haven't consulted a polyvex to me, um, partner, we are aware of your land ownerships, and therefore you would also have been contacted as to your potential landowners.
Uh, I'll tell you another rule you wouldn't give that.
I don't believe in one way that this is gonna, I'm asking this people.
Sorry.
Yeah. Um, I don't believe in any way, shape or form that this is gonna help people in Nosley. If you look at the five centres, sharing centres and the leisure centres, not one of them were, were landowners. They were from Newcastle, they were one from Manchester, and they were from outside everywhere, but no one in Nosley got a job on them sites. How are you gonna make that happen?
The local plan process does not, um, include the employment, um, construction jobs, um, opportunities. That's not the role of the local plan process.
You don't, you don't, that you can't let them.
Sorry, the employment that, when I, when I said about employment being created, um, a number of the green belt sites that will be taken out are for employment reasons. So what will be built on them will be, um, employment sites. So that, that could be logistic sites, um, it could be, um, office uses. So a number of the sites are specifically for employment uses. Um, the council, um, in, the land in the council, um, that we have, in the borough at the moment, um, there isn't sufficient employment land uses to create the jobs that are needed locally. And when I say locally, both in Nosley but also in the local city region as well. In relation to actual construction jobs of what will be built, that's not the role of the local plan.
Really, don't stop the village. A lot of names now.
I like him.
Am I right to assume that, uh, if it was up to Nosley, they wouldn't propose any amendments to the green belts? It's only after considerable pressure from government that they had to come up with these proposals. And also, but what Margaret is saying, that had there been significant discussions between the two major landowners, and our main names, which is Lord Derby and Peel Holdings, had there been any significant discussions with them? And in fact, if those two, uh, landowners, Peel Holdings and Lord Derby, have they made, have they, have they been counting central government and gardening releases as green belts? Because it seems to me that these two developers are going to break the green belts in hands of the Tory. And that's what, that's, and that's what, that's what I believe that's going on. Has there been any significant discussions between Peel Holdings and Lord Derby?
In relation to the green belt release in this area, there haven't been any, um, discussions with Peel Holdings, but there have been discussions with Lord Derby and Lord Derby, um, agents and, um, representatives did give evidence to the hearing.
Yeah, I'm sorry, just Peel Holdings and the, the chap in next to Spurcham.
Oh, right, sorry. The, the, the land in Sefton and the, the release of land in Sefton is not anything that is relevant to this plan. That is relevant to Sefton's local plan. Um, in relation to, um, and Peel Holdings have consulted Nosley, and we have consulted with them over land, but they are releasing in Sefton and also in West Lyle. But I'm not aware of their, um, consultations with Peel Holdings in relation to the green belt sites in Nosley, but that's because I don't think they own any of the green belt sites in Nosley.
Yeah, I mean, the initial question was, in fact, if, let's know if the Borough Council would do up these amendments to the green belts. It's only after considerable pressure from governments that the question.
When you say pressure from government, it's legislation, we have to provide land to be developed. That's, uh, the role of planning authorities. Um, you will read in the press that the, um, the government, um, says that the decision is a local decision. Um, and it is, you know, the council has to make that decision, but it is, um, has to comply with the law of the land. And the national plan and policy framework dictates that there needs to be a five-year supply of housing land. What I would say is, is that I think the council is very supportive of the fact of creating new homes for people in the borough and creating new jobs for people in the borough. Um, and therefore would never, um, argue against those two things. Um, but it has taken the decision, um, you know, very carefully in proposing the modifications that it proposed at this time.
Lisa, I understand that there's a need because, you know, the population dynamic makes them new homes. But, you know, some of the sites, that north of, uh, that plot of land on Nosley Lane, and the one by Ormskay Road and Barryishlanks, they're industrial. Uh, and also the one in, uh, Spurcham, that's industrial, it's nothing to do with population dynamics. It's about people capitalizing on their investments. And that's what I'm trying to say, I'm not suggesting there's been a conspiracy between Peel Holdings and Lord Derby, but I'd be, I'd be very surprised if there wasn't private discussions in the household restrooms there, or that, or in white talk, and that's what I'm suggesting.
The proposals that we are putting forward this time is for a mixed use at the Nosley Lane site. So that's part employment and part residential. Um, the proposals for the safeguarded land at Ormskay Road is for purely residential and no employment uses on that site are proposed at this time. I'm, I'm afraid I can't comment on the other issue in relation to Peel and Lord Derby, but I'm not aware of any relationship.
When you look at these sites that have been identified, it seems to me that there's a lot that Lord Derby and Peel Holdings could do with them. So it suggests that those discussions have been had, and if they have, that should be made known publicly so that people can take that forward. So I'd like to know if these areas that are also identified, there's been any discussions with anyone who owns any interest?
There's been discussions with, um, all of the landowners on, on the sites that are proposed. They were part of the public hearings. Um, I'm, sorry, I'm really, I'm not understanding the issue regarding Peel Holdings and Lord Derby. I'm obviously missing something.
Here's the issue, it's called a local plan, but it appears that this is a government plan that doesn't council the path.
It's a local plan, it's a, it's a plan that has to be approved by, um, the council, and it is then, after it's approved by the council, put forward to the government for ratification. Um, and that's in order for the council to comply with its statutory duty.
So that's what I'm hoping to do with, um, a government policy around building new homes and creating employment.
The, the government policy is, is the policy that's shaped the new planning legislation, so yes, it has.
Which changed the national planning policy.
Planning policy, absolutely.
To take the in belt out, so you're handed into that.
So the target about how, um, house building and the targets of brownland land are enshrined within that, and that does come from government policy, yes.
Just to go back to, um, the government inspector, Mr Martin Pike, and his examination. He talks about here, about, um, he's saying it's a sound plan, where he says he's identified several cr, critical issues on which changes are needed. And the one at the bottom, there's need for the release of land from green belts to provide land for a new business park and large-scale distribution use. Is there any plans to relocate any existing business parks within the new one? Because the business parks that stand now, there's a lot of empty premises. So are you, is there any plans to relocate them? So you will then have land there to do further building on? Because I'm talking about one, I, I know King's Business Park has got quite a few empty ones, but Kirby Adman is becoming dilapidated and in Bad Nick. And I've heard that that's looking to be relocated. Is it within these plans to move Kirby Adman or anywhere like that into these? Because how are you going to fill these business parks? Where are you going to get the businesses to go into them? When we've already, and if you, if you aren't going to relocate any to free some land, where are you going to get these businesses to go in? Because we've got loads of empty ones already.
There, there are no plans within the plan to relocate businesses, but that's.
Existing ones at the moment, there's none.
No, but that's also because this plan doesn't deal with that matter. This plan only deals with the designation of land, um, and therefore it wouldn't consider and how that land is then subsequently brought forward. Um, so there is definitely, that is not everything included in the plan. What I would say is, is that the council does have, um, a, a Nosley industrial park regeneration programme that is looking at better use of land within the regeneration park, um, and in trying to, you know, encourage that land to be redeveloped and new businesses brought forward. Um, once again, that was the evidence that we published, um, in order of support of the, um, developing the brownfield site space before going to the greenbelt sites. Um, but right now, no, um, no plans at all that I'm aware of to relocate any businesses, but the plan only deals with the principle of development, not the specifics of that. Obviously, the affordable housing and the development of affordable housing is something that we want to see. That's why 25% of it was a target that was put into the original plan. The other thing is to say is that, um, we do have residents who, who, um, have quite high earnings. And unfortunately, one of the issues that the borough has is that residents often move out of the borough and once they kind of progress through their career and maybe earnings increase. Um, also Nosley, um, has quite, um, a high level of earnings for those people who work here. And one of the aims of this plan is to try to get people who work here to also live here as well. Um, so it's about providing a mixed housing market where every part of the sector of the housing market can be provided for. Um, a, as I say, it's, depopulation has been an issue that the borough has, um, experienced in the past. And I'm sure that is a risk to the borough and the shredders.
Taya State has stated that only in exceptional circumstances will green belt land be altered or used. Um, and it's also stressed the importance and the permanency of green belt areas. Now, given that what we've heard, of brownbelt places are still available, do you really, really think this is extreme circumstances to, to? And given also the fact that the people at Nosley Village are so passionate about this area, I am myself. Um, do you really, really think this is exceptional circumstances to remove the green belts? I don't.
I, I, I can't comment on the Secretary of State's, um, comments. Um, obviously as an officer, we're not allowed to have any political views. What I would say is, is that the exceptional circumstances would be the issue of having insufficient land, um, to be developed. Um, and that's a part of the legislation that we were going to meet. Um, I don't know whether.
So the nurses, they're the sort of areas that, that, that.
And we put those forward, we, you know, the, the officers, um, put a very, very strong case together forward for that, that land to be developed, the brownfield sites to be developed. Um, but unfortunately, we lost that argument. Anyway, um.
Just in terms of, um, I don't find them exceptional circumstances for a green belt release. Um, the council was aware of that, and then that is part of what, what a vast and dry bar of this first was that we put forward to the inspector at the hearings. The inspector accepted the fact that because of the shortfall in housing land supply and, um, a lack of, um, a range of choice of sites for employment uses, we did have exceptional circumstances in Nosley that on balance outweighed the, the harm to green belt by releasing those sites. So although the Secretary of State has made, has made the comments about permanence of the green belt and the need, the meeting exceptional circumstances, that's one part of, um, government policy and planning policy, which is bound, needs to be balanced against the environmental sides of it, and also the, the social and economic elements, which are generally predicated by growth and delivery of new homes and new businesses in borough. And on balance, um, in Nosley, the case was that those, those issues outweighed the harm to the green belt in this case.
I, I, I don't believe the council's reasoning with it, it may be the right question.
If you drive around Nosley at the moment, there's loads and loads of empty houses and empty business premises. And my understanding is that the population in Nosley has gone down in the last five years. So say you was building loads more houses that are going to be left for, for ghost towns, especially in some of the areas, and if some areas are going to be more popular than others.
Was this taken into consideration? So, so did you just plan on releasing more green belt land? Um, you've looked at the population going down in Nosley, so have you released it? Or have you just released what you wanted to anyway?
Yes, I can answer that if you like. Um, we have looked really carefully, um, about the different evidence that's available for how the population in Nosley is likely to grow in the future. And we have accounted that we have had depopulation in the last few years. Um, but the government produces these things for population and household projections. They're produced by the Office of National Statistics and by the Department for Communities and Local Government. And they show that if we look forward over the period from now to 2028, there is projected to be an increase in, um, population in Nosley, which we need to plan for housing for. And in addition, um, to that, we know that there's a backlog of housing that we failed to deliver over the last few years because of the recession and because of the lack of land availability that we need to address. Um, we also know there's some pent-up housing need, um, for households in Nosley. For example, where maybe people in their late twenties and early thirties are still living with their parents because they can't afford to buy new houses, that's called concealed households. So you've basically got two households living in one house. And when you take all that evidence together, that's where we, we came up with our housing target, which is of 8,100 new homes that need to be provided to meet all of those needs over the plan period. So I would say that we, we have looked at that, that issue in, in quite a lot of detail.
Can I follow that up with a quick question? Can I just ask, so if, if these ten places are all released and, and can all be built on, as soon as they're released and, and planning permission goes through, they can all be built on. Are you just going to do this in stages? Because it's going to be a sad state of affairs if we let every single piece of land be built on, and then nobody comes, there isn't this population that uses it expecting, this big business boom uses it expecting.
Yeah.
We're going to be a ghost town again, we're going to be surrounded by more rubbish.
Yeah, that's a really good point, I, I can answer that as well. I mean, the thing as the local planning authority, we need to do is look at the best evidence we have available, um, to set a housing target. But at the end of the day, because the local authority isn't building houses anymore, um, you know, council houses being built anymore, we are reliant on the private sector to, to deliver that. So when we've looked at some of our housing supply in these green belt, um, sites, it's really important for us to understand that in principle, they are deliverable, they are attractive to the market, and landowners willing to sell, developers are willing to develop these sites. So while as Lisa said before, you know, we can't guarantee what's going to happen because it's all up to the market at the end of the day. We've used the best evidence we've got available to try and get the most appropriate plan for Nosley. And the government inspector, one of his really important roles is to review that evidence and to make sure that we've got the right balance. Um, and he has found that our targets for employment and housing growth are what he calls sound. They are in compliance with national planning policy and regulations.
Certain parts of safeguarded land, um, at Nosley Village, there's a culvert that runs, you know, zigzag right across that land. The river all, all crossed the brook possibly. Um, do the recommendations, um, you know, of strategic, um, strategic flooding policy suggest no buildings, um, of houses on these culverts? Um, how do you propose to address, you know, that, uh, that problem should there arise?
Um, detailed matters such as that not into the planning application stage. Um, the only thing I would say about the Nosley Village site is that it's not a risk of flooding, um, from rivers or, um, watercourses. So in that context, it, it would be safe to build on from a planning policy point of view. In terms of the culvert itself, it could be, um, relocated or made to some kind of easement where it's used as kind of open space, um, which would normally be required for a large-scale site of that, of that nature.
Thanks, Mr Tom.
Yeah. Thanks, Mr Mayor. Um, I, I find myself having to respond to that, and in college, across the way, councillor Arnold will back me up because he was directly involved in this. And I've been, I live in Nosley Village, and I've been subject to checks on my property because of the problems that have been had over the years with this culvert. There's one house in particular in Longborough Road, in which lots of surveys were told the MP was involved in it because this culvert was dragging branches from the top of Nosley Lane, right the way down to her property. Right, so it is a big issue. And your, your current policy around that states that no houses should be built on land that's got culverts. So how in a local plan, can you recommend the houses are built there without even taking them into consideration before the planning stage?
I very briefly said before, that it wouldn't be built literally on top of, it could be incorporated to have, or open space for a site, which would be normal for a site that type. We'd expect, um, the developers to set aside areas for open space, it wouldn't be completely developed. I think in terms of the issue with, um, it blocking or dragging, um, branches, um, the local plan policies, which will be attached to any development site, would require developers to upgrade the infrastructure to cope with new developments. So it may be the case that there may be improvements that could be made as part of development that may address some of those problems of, but again, that was something that would be dealt with at planning application stage. But again, that was something that would be dealt with at the planning application stage.